Like to call this meeting, special meeting of the Finance Committee, to order. And we have four members of the committee present. Therefore, we have a quorum and we can conduct business. Number two, approval of meeting minutes. We don't have any appearance of the public or members of the public or county employees. Any requests?
We do not, Chairman Max.
Very good. We're moving on to 4A1A, and that's request approval of proposed insurance program for policy year 2022. And Ms. Taylor, would you proceed?
We have two companies that would like to present to you tonight their proposal for our proposed insurance program. The first that will come to the table will be our group from the Illinois County's Risk Management Trust. So if you'd like to join us here at the table, gentlemen. And as a reminder, if you'll hit the button on the bottom right that has the profile face, that will turn your mics on.
Is everyone able to hear me okay? Good? Okay. First off, I just want to thank you guys, you know, for coming this evening. I know having another meeting in all of our busy lives can be cumbersome. So definitely want to thank you for your time today. Hopefully, you can find value in, you know, what we discuss here shortly. Just quickly, just want to do a quick introduction. My name is Ben Jeffries. This is my business partner, Jay McGee, and this is Bob Spring, representing the company that we have today, ICRMT. I grew up here locally, grew up in Ridley, Illinois, been here my whole life, went to ISU, graduated business school there, worked for one of the larger insurance company here in town, and then got over into risk management. So anyway, just from, you know, being here from the community, you know, we're here to ask for your support. I sit on the McLean County Chamber CEO Council, and one of our, the largest things that we do is discuss the revitalization of our community, mainly being downtown Bloomington. And so Jay and I just recently moved our office just right across the street. So if there is anything that does come up, we are, we are close enough to choke, as you'd say. So, you know, our goal is to provide you guys with utmost customer service and risk management skills. So I know we are short on time here, so I just kind of want to open this up on some of the services that we can do, and I'll let Bob go ahead and do that.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Like Ben mentioned, my name is Bob Spring. I am with IPMG, who is the administrator of the Illinois County's Risk Management Trust, the ICRMT, to throw another acronym at you. The ICRMT is a program that was launched in 1983, so almost 40 years old, with the intent to provide steady and consistent coverage for counties in Illinois. ICRMT currently writes 60 counties in the state, and over the last 30, almost 40 years, has evolved to providing a full suite of risk management services along with all the coverages that go with it. So in doing that, we also, in the program, we do insure about 426 public entities, all in Illinois collectively. To date, the program is about $102 million in written premium. I do believe you've all seen the proposal and the quote. Do you have it on copy in front of you, right, or has it been passed out? So, you know, obviously, this is your time, so I wanted to make sure that we get ample time to answer any questions that you guys have. And I can take those at any time, but a few things I'd like to note is the value of the ICRMT and what it does for counties in Illinois. A couple of things of note, services that are included. I won't get into every service in detail, but a few to mention. One is, we have an exclusive with the Legal Liability Risk Management Institute. They're a national group, and so for all our members, we provide template and custom policies and procedures for law enforcement, both for the street and road operations as well as the jail, and then the trainings that go with it. I think when you look at the exposures of the county, that's important to mention because while we're providing the limit and the coverage, really, when you look at the exposures you have, the defense that you're going to create for future claims, I think it's important to note that policies and procedures are your best defense, and then the training that goes with that. And one thing to note about Legal Liability Risk Management Institute compared to some of the other providers is they're one of the very few that will actually testify to their policies in court. So it's just an added layer that we go to protecting the counties in Illinois. We also include a full suite of online training courses for all the employees. We have an open-door legal service, so that you have access to the attorney, our lead litigation firm, so anything you need to access in terms of hiring, firing, employment practices, and how the policies may respond, you have full access to them at no additional charge. We include in our program for all members a full property appraisal, so you will get that in year one if you choose to join, in which case, what was Duff and Phelps, it's now Kroll, they will come out and do a full appraisal of all your real property, and that product will be yours. So we'll hand that report to you to make sure that we're help, you know, properly insuring that. Any question? I know in terms of the coverages, we have done our best to match with the information that Mr. Spanos gave us, all the limits and retentions. I know there's, I think he's pointed out to you in some of the differences, but I think the limits have all been matched in the best of what we were shown. Any questions on the coverages and limits or services that we provide?
One thing that you provided was a deductible of $250,000 for our nursing home liability. And why did you choose that number and not our 50, not lower deductibles?
So when we insure nursing home, it's on our, it's on our general liability, it's endorsed under our general liability form. So all our liability lines, general liability, law enforcement liability, auto liability, it's all reinsured by the same reinsurer, and so we've kept the retentions the same. We don't alter them by line of coverage within that. So those are all, that's on the GL, so we do not alter that.
Member Barnett?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I had a couple of questions for you guys, if I may. The first one, you, ICRT, ICRMT, excuse me, you said includes about 60 counties from around the state. Are any of those counties of McLean's size or larger?
So Champagne, Kankakee, I don't, I mean, depending on the metric you'd use to compare, I think would be a couple that may be comparable. Tazewell, not too far, little smaller, but carrying retentions, you know, in a similar nature as to what McLean County would be doing. And I can provide you with a whole list of the counties, but you're right. So I can't say specifically if you would be the largest or not, mentioning some of those, I don't, depending on the metric, I don't have that all in front of me, but there'd be some that are, I think, comparable. I know Champagne, for example, nursing home, you know, things like that nature.
Okay. And the other question, the other question I had, if I may, the, is that all right if I?
Please, once you have the floor and ask as many questions as you need to, and then we'll move on to another member, should they have other questions.
Thank you. So down at the bottom of the sheet we have here, I noticed that when it comes to legal counsel, it says ICRMT choice. Can you talk a little bit about that, or what, if that's your choice, you would choose the attorneys we use and where those folks are from and?
Yeah, so, well, we'd be open to discussion, I think. You know, as the question came up, I know you have some relationships. I do not know which firms those currently are. So I, we are open to discussing using them. I can't say definitively without, you know, we reserve the right to vet those and approve that. We, you know, with the retentions that you take, that would be the intent, is if you have someone that you're comfortable with. And very well, maybe we have a panel council that's already approved, you know, so we either go through the approval process, or it may very well be someone that we are familiar with, and, you know, we can carry on and that nature. So at the end of the day, yes, I think we would have the right to approve that, but our intent would be, as we do with anyone that, especially when you take an SIR the size of yours, I mean, it's your money, on that is to create that relationship. So most of the time, while we, and we can introduce you to some other ones, if there's areas of expertise that you think may benefit that, but we were open to discussion. I just, I have, I don't know who you're currently working with, and I can't approve them without that information. But our intent would be to discuss that, and certainly, when we look at their handling of claims, too, I think there's certain things that are, for us, reinsurance reportable, that we may have a stronger preference if you have a wrongful death, or a jail suicide, or something like that. We have some experts where we may say, depending on their experience, where we may say, hey, listen, this might be something we need to involve some of the national guys that do a lot of this. Certainly, things that are well with under the, your GL retention or that, we wouldn't have an issue with that.
Member Friedrich.
Could you go over your claims history? And I'm not gramming the right terminology, maybe, do you know what I mean by that, claims history?
Our, in terms of?
Your, there's ratios.
Loss ratios?
Yeah. And insured-to-value, that's kind of a concern. Well, not insured-to-value.
Well, to insured-to-value, we've taken the, that would be from a property perspective. You guys have given us the figures that you have, the TIV, we've worked off what you've given us. That's when I mentioned the appraisal. We would do a full property appraisal to, you know, and create that work product, say, hey, if there's some areas of concern of are we insuring that physical property correctly? In terms of, if you're getting into program loss ratios, I can leave you with a copy of the financials today. You know, our financial position is strong, and that's where you would find, you know, how that charts off. So where we are, so we currently are in a strong surplus position. Is that where you're?
No. Claims history, trust companies' claims history, we've had some members look at it, and it wasn't clear to me, just, I just got to say.
I mean.
A little bit ago.
We're in the, in the business of risk management and insurance, and therefore, we take claims by nature, right? We expect, especially some of the sites in McLean County, to have claims, so we pay claims daily. You know, and our financials would be, I think, the document that would show you historically, because that would be the compiled, all expenses, both claim expense and then program expenses, and then obviously, you weigh that. You know, so if you're looking at a true loss ratio or a combined ratio of the trust, that's where you would look in the financials, so that would be, you know, the combined ratio being loss costs and our expenses versus premium collected. You know, and then there's other avenues in terms of, like, you know, last few years, investment income has been strong for the program in terms of building.
It's not on the investment side, it's on that.
Yeah, but that would all be captured in the financial statement, which I'm happy to leave.
Any other questions for? Yes, Member Barnett?
I don't want to go out of turn if Member Erickson has.
Very good. Please proceed, Mr. Barnett.
Thank you. So on the, on the SIR for the nursing home, since it's part of the general liability, is that, is that $250,000 just for nursing home claims, or it looks like it's $250,000 for the most part across the board? Is that, is that right?
Yeah, yes, it's a $250,000, $250,000 retention, so that's per claim. So if the claim comes in, whether it's for the nursing home or other general liability, the first $250,000 would be the county's responsibility.
Okay.
And then when we structure our reinsure, it's on the GL. The GL primary layer there is a $1 million, $3 million aggregate, so you have, you have that first million, and then if you look on the excess page, or we provided, for the nursing home specifically, it's by line excess, $2 million. So that's specific to just nursing home claims, it's over the primary $1 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, are there any other questions? Yes, Member Erickson.
On this sheet, are we going to get a breakdown, or is this just for our information? Is someone like from administration going to go over it with us, or any explanation of the numbers on here?
Mr. Spanos put together these numbers to compare the major categories of the proposals. Yep, that's a good idea.
Once the presentations are complete? Last time, any additional questions? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
I appreciate your time. And if anything pops up, please, we'd be happy to get you any information or documents.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next up will be Rich from AJ Gallagher.
Can you hear me? Okay, good. I've got a, you know, we've been working not only with McLean County for years, but, you know, for the renewal process, and I've got a lot in my head, so I'll probably talk a little bit fast. If anything doesn't make sense, please let, you know, stop me and ask a question. So I kind of had to look back through my notes, and we had first met with McLean County back in 1999, had some conversations with them, and typically, what was the process here was to utilize one broker to go out and assemble all the information, go out and market the program, come back and summarize everything with recommendations. So over, you know, we actually didn't get assigned to be the broker until, I think it was about 2012, and I think what that was a result of is some, some issues that happened over the course of the last couple of years, or the years prior to that, excuse me. So what we do is, we put a lot of information together, we go out to the markets, we come back, we narrow down the options that are available to you, and what happened was, we had extensive conversations with the county over the years about what type of policy form that the county really wants, and, excuse me, the unanimous consent, or the unanimous feedback that we've gotten was that it was, you were interested in getting an occurrence form policy. So, you know, what we did here is we summarized everything. If you look at the red box there, that is one option that provides you with an occurrence form policy, which is exactly what you have. So you're going from the white area, which is the expiring program, to the pink area, okay? So as you can see, this was all put on the agenda for last meeting. The one thing that I did differently is the two columns on the right-hand side, I took a look at what it would be to include the nursing home into the SERMA program. And just to give you a little description, SERMA is the Counties of Illinois Risk Management Agency Program that's sponsored by the Illinois Association of County Board Members and Commissioners. We've talked about this with the county over the past. It is a pool program, similar to the ICRMT program, difference being is that it is a claims-made program, it's very similar. So the reason that I wanted to put this in here is, and I have not looked, I've been in the car for the last two hours, I have not seen, I have no idea what the other proposal looks like, but I wanted to see what would happen is if we put in the nursing home into the program using a $250,000 outer deductible. And if you could see from where you're at on the renewal, in the, in the pink shaded area, and you see the drop in premium in the last two columns, that's basically what happens. So if you move it into a pool program with a $250,000 deductible, the premium drops about $275,000. So like I said, I have no idea what they quoted, because I've been, you know, at the office, and then I just got in the car at 1:00, so I have no idea what the quotes look like. But getting back to it, again, like I said, I've been in meetings with Jennifer Ho, who is the risk manager, years ago, and we would sit in her office for hours on hours and going through policy forms. Really where this, the occurrence form came up is with the Beaman case, and the county spent over $500,000 defending that case because it was an issue with the insurance company going from an occurrence form to a claims-made form, and then what they were doing is that they were arguing about whether the wrongful act occurred at the time of incarceration or at the time of exoneration. And seeing that Mr. Beaman was incarcerated in 1992, and the claim wasn't filed until 2012, you're looking at a span of over, you know, 20 years period there, where, who picks up the claim? So that was the issue that went to the appellate court. Also with the Beaman case, I guess that's all gone all the way up to the Supreme Court. But, you know, just for reference purposes, I passed out the, that thicker piece, and if you could just take a quick second, there's only three sentences there to read. So kind of, just to summarize it, you know, this gets kind of confusing, and it's, it's not something that's simple, because there's a lot of ways to deal with it, but an occurrence form basically is, if something happens today, it's covered into perpetuity. If a claim occurs for sexual abuse, for wrongful prosecution, for wrongful death, discrimination, you have coverage going all the way down. A claim, on a claims-made form, the claim has to be filed in the policy period. So I think that's where things kind of went haywire with the state's program, because they converted the policy from one form to the other form, and then everybody said, no, it's not our claim. And in the meantime, you're in court for two years fighting this thing. So, again, this is something that Jennifer and Bill Lawson and even Don, we had talked about, and I, at every renewal meeting and before the renewal meetings, what I do is I say, what is your preference, how you want to approach this? And that is just on the liability section. So I said, okay, we're going to go after just those companies. So kind of, I'll back up here a second. When we do the marketing, what happens is that there's maybe 20 companies out there that will insure public entities. So I've been doing this for 30 years. I head up the Midwest region for public sector, all I do is cities, counties, townships, villages. And what happens is you get to 20 companies that will quote for liability coverages. If you narrow that down to the ones that will provide occurrence form, that's probably about five or six, and then those are the ones that we focus on, and we say, okay, what can you do? We take all that and we put that into a summary, and we go through all the differences to make sure that when we get to this point in the meeting, that we're not talking about deductibles, we're not talking about, you know, coverages, reporting periods, and things like that, that you've got an apples-to-apples comparison. Now, on the other hand, too, like I said, if you want to entertain going into a pool program, it's a very good program, I could talk to you about it, I've got plenty of information on it, but like I said, there is a cost savings if you do put the nursing home into the program of about $275,000. So that's pretty much about it. I could talk about any other subject. There's a lot of other issues. We talk about sexual abuse, we talk about cyber liability, how did you get to the $15 million in limits? You had $10 million when, when we first met. Cyber liability was not even on the table at the time. That evolved over the last five to seven years. It's getting increasingly difficult to get the coverage, let alone get more than $1 million worth of limits. So there's just so many different components on it. The one other thing I want to mention, too, this is something that we've talked about over and over again, but the, just for a refresher, the CNA program that has the nursing home coverage, they have a, I think it was a $25,000 or $50,000 deductible, but the defense costs for any claims are outside. So what happens is, if there are no damages awarded, you don't have a deductible. So what happens is, if there are no damages awarded, you don't have a deductible. If there is a judgment, and there's a, there's a settlement for damages, then you're deductible for, includes any kind of attorney's fees, legal fees. So it's kind of one of the selling points. It is a little bit expensive. That marketplace is constricted incredibly over the years because of so many claims. And I work with counties who have nursing homes, and it's, it's just the nature of the beast. So it's, you get claims from slips falls, people die there. But if you can prove that there was no negligence on the part of the county, and it's just defense costs, then that's paid by CNA. So there's good and bad. You're paying a higher premium, but there are benefits to not having to pay attorney's fees.
Questions? Member Erickson.
I think you were trying to do this in the beginning, and maybe you need to go back over it for me. Using the Beaman case as the example, can you explain the difference between a claims matter and an occurrence policy? How that would have been covered differently?
Yeah, it's very complicated. I wish Don was here, too. It was, really what happened is your insurance company, you were with a pool called State's Risk Retention Group, who changed the policy form from occurrence to, to a claims made policy. And during that time period, they offered the county the option to buy a tail coverage to report. But sure enough, that claim occurred in that time period. And what the insurance company was saying, no, the wrongful act occurred at that time when he was incarcerated. And the county was saying, no, the wrongful act didn't occur until he was released, when it became known that he was not the suspect in the case. So you've got the insurance company, obviously, they're going to have their attorney saying, no, it happened in 1992, and you didn't buy any more coverage for that year because you had a claims made policy. And the county is saying, no, there was no wrongful act in 1992. He was convicted of murder. But the claim wasn't filed until, you know, 2012. So you're looking at the difference of about a 20-year period there. So, again, when we met in 2012 with, with the county, we said, there's a way to fix this if you have an all occurrence policy form. It doesn't matter. You know, whether the, whether he was incarcerated in 1992, or whether he was incarcerated, or released in 2012, you're going to have coverage. It goes by the date that the wrongful act occurred. And that's been a topic with the, not only the judicial system, but, you know, obviously, insurance companies are arguing it one way, and policy holders are arguing it the other way.
May I ask Counselor Spanos to please provide a little bit, layman's terms more on the claims made versus occurrence? So our members understand the difference of those, and why the county is focused on occurrence versus claims made.
Sure. I'm sorry that Mr. Knapp couldn't be here. I'll try and, try and fill his shoes. So it goes by when the claim is, if you have a claims made policy, that policy covers claims made during that policy period. If you have an occurrence policy, you have a policy that covers claims that occur during that period, during the period of the policy. So if in 1992 you had an occurrence policy, and in 2010 you have a claim based on something that occurred in 1992, as long as the statute of limitation doesn't apply, that policy will cover it, right? But if you go, the problem is when you go from one to the other, and if you don't have the tail coverage. If you go from a claims made policy to an occurrence policy, there's a gap in there, potentially. So you have to have a tail coverage, which means that if you, one of these claims falls in between, where it's not during the occurrence period, right? And it was, would have had coverage for the, if you had occurrence when it happened, the tail goes back and covers those periods. And like Mr. Sluska says, it's, it is, it gets pretty complicated. And there are a number of appellate court decisions out there. The difficulty comes when you change from one to the other and then back.
Member Erickson, please, just proceed unless somebody jumps in.
Thank you, Mr., Chairman Metzger, or Chairwoman Metzger, or Chairperson Metzger, whatever I'm supposed to say. You know, so, did they decide, was it, was it a prior administration decided that we were not going to get the tail then? Is that what happened? We didn't purchase the tail?
Correct.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, and sure enough, that's like the claim that came in, in that, in that period.
So that kind of explains why we then went to occurrence. We were kind of,
Exactly.
We kind of, all right, thank you.
And I have, I have clients on both policy forms. I'm just explaining the differences. And like I said, if you give me direction to go out, like, we can, and there is a section in the policy that we do, can submit to the county, but we, we do all the marketing for the county. So there's a number of different companies that we go to with the results in there as to what they came in with. So we're, we're actually acting as your broker and going out and soliciting other quotations. But then, like I said earlier, is that if you want 20 quotes, we can get you 20 quotes. But when you narrow it down to just the occurrence form, that gets it down to about five or six different companies. And they're all good quality companies, all A-rated companies, so, you know, you know, the genesis is of, of the, of the world, the ones that have been around for a long time, those are going to be around for, for many years to come, so.
Any other questions? Member Barnett.
I have a question, but I think it's more appropriately directed to Mr. Spanos, so I don't know if you want me to wait, or... So I'm, I'm obviously not an insurance expert, but it seems like having an occurrence model provides better coverage, or at least continuing an occurrence model provides better coverage for the county than a claims model, or at least better protects us from possible expensive litigation and payouts. Is that a fair general statement to say?
I'm sure that someone could come in and explain to you otherwise, but as long as you stay with the coverage that you have, you never have a problem. The problem becomes that if you're with one and decide to move to the other, then you, you have to buy a tail coverage. And I think one of the documents that we've passed out showed that the tail coverage can be as much as 175% of the premium that it would be for that policy. It can be expensive, is the point. And I can confirm that from my conversations with Don, there's no hearsay objection in this meeting, I don't think. But I have been advised that that has been the county's preference in the past, when possible, to stay with the occurrence policy.
Yeah, and just, I know we're in a public meeting, but I do have a county, it's actually Peoria County, that closed their nursing home, and we're still getting claims from them. They closed, I think it was Headington Oaks, like in 2018, and we just had a new claim filed last month.
That's a great, a great example, looking forward. If you were to shut down the nursing home at some point, and you had claims made coverage only, then in order to shut it down, you'd want to be looking into a tail, right? A tail down the road, because you don't know when those claims might come in. And depending on the nature of the claim, the statute of limitations can be up to two years, and then you have the statute of repose, or you may have a discovery rule issue that could take it out even further, so.
Member Friedrich.
Chris, on looking at the two proposals, general-
May I interrupt just a moment? Are we, are we finished with, because we want to only provide about 10 minutes for him. We want to make sure we have kind of an equality here, so are we, are we-
I don't have a question.
Any other questions for Rich? Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now I think we can proceed with those questions and maybe that type of a discussion.
Chris, on the general ledger side, there seems to be a big discrepancy between the per occurrence and aggregated values. Can you explain that?
What I did here was I took the two proposals, the lowest of the Gallagher proposal and the ICRMT proposal, and listed their, by coverage. And where I saw discrepancy is where you see the colors are different. And there's a green for one and a red for the other. So, and some of those policies, for instance, the sex abuse is on a claims made basis in the ICRMT, and it's on an occurrence basis in the Gallagher proposal. And that's, so that's what I'm demonstrating there. You'll see that the, the nursing home has an SIR of 50,000 with the Gallagher proposal, and a 250,000 with the ICRMT proposal. So those are the differences in the numbers. And then at the bottom, you see the premium difference.
But my question is, on the general liability side, the differences there, because there's substantial differences between occurrences and aggregates values. That's my question.
Oh, okay. I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, yeah. So the I, they're-
Well, so, I guess my first question, if we gave ICR, if we gave Illinois County's Risk Management, what we currently have with Gallagher, why would we not have a general ledger that was matching in values? That being the first one, and why would they present to us those numbers that are different and lower?
Okay, so first of all, I would say, get out of your head the, the general ledger, because that's not what this is. This is just a, a simple chart breaking it down. There's no assets and liabilities and stockholders equity or anything. All I'm trying to do is, is just demonstrate to you what it looks like. So you were throwing me a little bit on the general ledger side. I'm sorry. All this is, is they, it's the same coverage broken down different ways. So ICRMT has 1,300,000, or 3 million on the aggregate on the first level, and then it offers a $15 million excess policy over the top to give you a total coverage of 15. Gallagher went at it a little bit differently. They went in at 2 million, 4 million. Then they have a 3 million excess to take you to 5 on a single claim, and then a 10 million over the top of that to also bring you to a total of 15 million. I think that's where, I think that's where you're going with that question. So ultimately, it's like, for instance, for the, just a run-of-the-mill general liability claim, both policies would offer 15 million, up to 15 million, through their various layers.
Other questions for Counselor Spanos? Member Erickson, please.
Explain to me if I'm seeing this conceptually right. If you have an occurrence policy, it might be better, because in the end, you will never have to pay for the tail insurance. Is that correct? Whereas you have the claims policy, in the end, if you decide to do something different, you'll have to pay for tail insurance. Is that, is that right, or is that just wrong?
Generally, I think that's absolutely right.
Okay. And that tail insurance policy is expensive, is that what you're saying, or, or do we have any?
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge, and it's somewhat limited, Chuck, I will tell you that in my recollection, it's expensive. Not ever having sold it myself.
All right.
Member Friedrich.
I'm not putting anybody on the spot. Clear on the left side of your column. If I had to rank these, and is rank them being important or not, I'll just take public official liability. I don't think that's more important than law, than law enforcement liability. In what I've seen lately, work comp claims has always been a significant category. Would you agree with that as being one of the top three in this left-hand column? If, if you could rank them. Obviously, we haven't had a cyber liability issue on the county. Risk, I'm talking risk. And I don't mean to, maybe administration or that. I'm trying to rate my risks.
So we have a large volume of work comp claims, because you have 800 and some employees.
Exactly.
So, yeah, I mean, from that standpoint, you know, you're going to use a work comp. Now, that's why we have a big self-insured retention on, on work comp. Otherwise, we would be paying a lot more money for work comp coverage. But then, on the other hand, we also have a lot of, we have a lot of claims come out of the jail, or out of the law enforcement side. So we have those. We have other employment cases. So it's just, sure. The most important insurance policy is the one you need for the most recent claim. I mean, really, so-
Right.
If we had a cyber breakdown, we, we're all going to be really, or break in, we're going to be really happy that we had cyber insurance, right?
Right.
If we don't ever have one, then it feels like you're throwing that premium away. Don't say that to anybody from State Farm or those in town, but you know what I'm saying.
Right. Do you understand my question as far as-
I can't rank them for you, Mr. Friedrich, I don't think. I-
I'm just thinking we have more-
I could only have three of these coverages. I, I definitely want the general liability. I think I'd probably, definitely want the law enforcement liability. You got to have your property coverage. I don't know how you'd get rid of your work comp coverage. You know.
They're all significant, but I'm trying to-
I have to think on that a lot more, and then I'd have to hire somebody to give me some advice, probably. Seriously, it's, it's-
So what you're saying is, as a finance committee member, we would need to, that would be something we would analyze on our own? Rank, the ranking of them would have to be an analysis that we make on our own, that you are not, as a member of, or representing the county, you're not seeing one is greater than the other.
If this feels like a law school question, I'm trying to come up with both sides of the answer. You know, they're all important, you know, to certain degrees. And our biggest exposures are probably your general liability, law enforcement liability, public officials, probably not so much. Nursing home, we haven't had a lot of claims, but if you have them, they're huge. Right?
All right. One thing that we do need to do is, for A1A, I need a motion to request approval of the proposed insurance program for policy year 2022. May I have a motion? Put it on the floor.
I make a motion that, we retain the Gallagher?
No, I'm just need the motion right now, so we can put it on the floor, and then we can vote on which one we're going to do, okay? So I need the motion-
To put it on the floor.
So the motion was by Member Friedrich, and a second by Member Barnett. Now we can have a discussion, or we can vote, so we have the motion on the floor. Member Barnett.
I, just a, a quick question. What, what time does executive committee start?
We are not convening the executive committee. The full board will start at 5.
At?
5:30.
45.
Oh.
So, Member Friedrich. So we have the motion on the floor. So, so request approval of that proposed policy. And then, Member Friedrich, you are proposing to retain Gallagher- And then, Member Friedrich, you are proposing to retain Gallagher. Is that correct?
Well, there's no questions. No questions. I make a, I'll make a motion that we retain Gallagher as our broker and insurance provider for year 2022.
Do we have a second on that? We have a second by Member Barnett. All in favor? Yes, please, go right ahead.
I don't even know if it's on this issue, so maybe this would be out of, how will we do this next year? And what's the plan?
We had that discussion, and so I'll let you go ahead.
It's not on the, yeah, it's not part of the current pending motion, but there is a plan.
But we do have a plan for next year.
Well, Bill, it's a, it's a relevant question, and the only, the only issue is it's not on the agenda. That's the better answer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So parliamentary question, I may have messed this up, so I want to make sure that we had a motion to approve the proposed insurance. We didn't have who it was with. So do, so Member Friedrich made the motion to have Gallagher? So help me with my parliamentary, amend it.
Amend the initial motion, motion to amend the original motion to approve Gallagher, if that's what you have to call on.
There we go. That's what we need to do.
And then vote on the motion to amend and then vote on the motion.
Very good. So, Member Friedrich, you are, we are amending, you have agreed to amend that motion to retain Gallagher. And Member Barnett, you second that amendment? Let's vote on the amended motion. All in favor of that amended motion, say aye. Opposed? Same sign? That amended motion passes. So now we're going to vote on the motion. All right? And all in favor of that, we retain Gallagher as our insurance program for 2022, say aye? Opposed? Unanimous? It will, we will retain, or we are going to go to the board with that recommendation to retain Gallagher. There are no payment of bills, which is five. Number six, any other business or communications? Seeing none, we are adjourned.